Good afternoon and welcome to the September 2, 2021 State Board of Education meeting. Board members, please engage your microphones before speaking and turn them off when you are done speaking, and please turn off your cell phones. Thank you. Live web streaming is available through the State Board of Education website, Agenda item one, call to order. Patricia Tim contacted me in advance to let me know she would be absent from this afternoon's meeting. The September 2, 2021 State Board meeting will now come to order. Agenda item 1.1, roll call. Andrea, please call the roll.
Patty Goobles?
Here.
Jaclyn Morrison? Deborah Neary?
Present.
Patsy Cojones?
Here.
Lisa Fricki?
Here.
Maureen Nichols?
Here.
Robin Stevens?
Here.
Patricia Tim? Commissioner Bloomstead?
Present.
Six present, two absent.
Thank you, Andrea. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Agenda item 1.3, information regarding the Open Meetings Act is posted as you enter the room from the main entrance doors. The Opens Meeting Act is also posted on the State Board of Education's website, www.education NE.gov/StateBoard. Agenda item 1.4, COVID meeting protocol. Commissioner?
Yes, posted in your, in your, with your items underneath our meeting system, includes our written protocols that consider maximum attendance, considerations for attendings during the meeting, including accessibility masks, hand sanitizer, physical distancing, and we ask folks to kind of go through their personal questionnaire to see if they're having any symptoms. So, other than that, please just kind of regard one another's need for space today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Agenda item 2.1, agenda overview and consent agenda process. Commissioner?
Yeah, so tomorrow actually is when we will take up the consent agenda. So if you do have any items that you had either further questions on or wanted to pull for separate consideration, you can place those in front of Scott Summers. I think he has a box there, yes he does, so to be able to do that. And then, before, since I'm on the topic of Scott Summers, I want to give Scott Summers a quick recognition for his service. As you know, this will be Scott's last board meeting, so there's lots of clever humor and things that I know I will miss, but appreciate Scott's service to the Department of Education.
Report on rules, 2.2.
Yes, so again, in Spark, you can find actually the rules attachment. There are three different rules to report on. Rule 24 was sent to the Attorney General's office on August 9 for consideration, for their review. And then a couple of rules, rules 1 and 2, were approved by the Attorney General earlier in August and sent on to the governor for his consideration. And that's all I have on that front.
And agenda item 2.3, board operations information, that would be Ryan. Ryan, 4.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I do have two things for you today to put on your radar. One, next week you'll get an email from Andrea or Laura about a training for our new expense reimbursement procedures. And so, you know, we've been using a paper copy of that, even though it's electronic, it's in a form, we'll be migrating that to, to an online form and spend some time with you training in that. And even in that training, you might be able to submit your expenses from the last month. I'm hopeful that you'll find it more intuitive and easy to push some buttons and submit it. I know Patty, we did some training with you quite a few months ago but weren't ready to launch it, given the Early Adopter Award on this to Board Member Morrison because she submitted last month's expenses in this format, and I think they've gotten paid already. And so, it should even be a quicker process for you in your reimbursement. So Andrea and Laura will be reaching out about that. Second, thinking forward to the October board meeting. We know that that conflicts with the NASB virtual conference, and so President Nichols has been working with us in the Commissioner's office and thinking about a slightly different schedule for the October meeting, particularly around the committee meetings that would happen before the Friday business meeting. And so, so we'll be working with her on that. I'm bringing, I'm bringing that to you now, particularly for committee chairs to start thinking and working with President Nichols about when you would have your committee meetings in the next few weeks in preparation for the October meeting. And that's all I have today.
Any questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan. Agenda item 4, President's Report. I sent to you a week or two ago the various area NASB meetings that we have been invited to, so be sure to let your travel person know if you're planning to attend one of those, or if you have made plans and need to step back and not be able to go, please let them know as well. There's also the annual conference coming up, as Ryan discussed, that conflicts at the same time as our next board meeting, and we'll be working on that. You'll be getting more information on that as it comes. I want to share some really wonderful news. Our own Dr. Rachel Wise, who just stepped down and Patty Goobles replaced her this past January, she has received from our National Association, the National Association of State School Boards, NASB, the 2021 Distinguished Service Award, which is NASB's highest award bestowed on a State Board of Education member. And these awards are given to current and former members who have made exceptional contributions to education, and we all certainly know that Rachel has done that. So I'm, we must be very proud. I know that each and every one of you would be as well, and I hope that when they give those awards, that we'll be able to be a part of that. And also, the other wonderful news, and I have already shared that with you, but I want to make sure the public understands and knows that Patty Goobles, who did replace Dr. Rachel Wise, was elected by her NASBE class, our National Association, to be on the board, to represent her class on the Board of Directors, and that is a big deal. So we're really proud of Nebraska being on the National Board of Directors. So thank you, Patty, for your service, and going forward, that is. That concludes my report. Agenda item 5, standing committee reports. Agenda item 5.1, Policy Committee. Patty, would you provide a report from the Policy Committee meeting?
Yes, I will, thank you. The Committee on Policy met on September 2 and reports that the Committee has no action or discussion items. The Committee continues the conversation of the reorganization of the State Board Policy Reference Manual and believes that a full State Board discussion in a retreat setting would be best to gain input regarding the proposed reorganization. Two general policy, policy position statements, S5, Expanded Learning Opportunities, and S11, Position Statement for Nebraska Digital Education, are set to expire October 6, 2021. The Committee agreed that these two statements are antiquated and suggest that these be allowed to sunset and newly restructured statements be written. Discussion on Board Policies, P5, Contracts, Grants, and Purchases, and P11, Data Access and Use, will be scheduled for the Committee's October meeting. Also, next month, the Committee will begin the scheduled four-year review of B20, Board Membership and Associations, and P7, Teaching Certificates. This concludes the Policy Committee report.
Any questions of Patty and her report? Seeing none. Agenda item 5.2, the Legislative Committee did not meet, therefore there is no report from the Legislative Committee. Agenda item 5.3, the Commissioner's Appraisal did not meet, therefore there is no report from the Commissioner's Appraisal Committee. Agenda item 5.4, Lisa, please provide a report from the AQUEST Teaching, Learning, and Service Domain Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Teaching, Learning, and Serving reports on three action items today. The Committee reports on, the Committee recommends approval of the College and Career Ready Standards for English Language Arts. Additionally, the Committee recommends the Board suspend the process on proposed accountability, accreditation, and approval rules. Both of these items are on the agenda for, to be proposed in action today. Regarding the statement on the health standards, the Committee has proposed a revised draft and will be meeting again at 5:00 PM for further discussion. The Committee may propose additional drafts later this afternoon for the Board's consideration. The Committee recommends the Board adopt the Statement on Health Education Standards at the Friday board meeting. This concludes the Teaching and Learning and Serving Report.
Any questions for Lisa? Lisa, is there a motion on item 5.4A?
Yes, Madam President. I move to approve the Nebraska College and Career Ready Standards for English Language Arts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion moved by Lisa, seconded by Patsy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Pat, Andrea, please call the roll.
Cojones?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Morrison? Tim? Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. Lisa, is there a motion on item 5.4B?
Yes, Madam President. I move to suspend the rule revision scope of work approved at the December 2020 meeting and extend the timeline as outlined in the attached agenda item rationale.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Lisa, seconded by Patty. Is there any discussion on the motion? Andrea, please call the roll.
Stevens?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Tim? Morrison? Cojones?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Thank you, Andrea. Agenda item 5.5, Patsy, please provide a report from the AQUEST Student Success, Access, and Support Domain Committee meeting.
The Committee on AQUEST and Student Success.
Microphone.
I'm having a bad time here. I want to turn over.
Do you need to make that bigger?
No, it's fine, I can see it. Okay. The Committee on AQUEST Student Success and Access and Support Domain met on September 2, 2021, and had two action items to approve the renewal of Rule 11 waiver request from ESU3 and Santee Community Schools. The Committee recommended the approval of both of these. The Committee didn't have a discussion on leading of Equity and Excellence Program and the Safe Policy Network. This concludes the AQUEST Student Success and Access Committee Report.
Thank you, Patsy. Any questions for Patsy on her report? Seeing none. Patsy, is there a motion on item 5.5A?
Yes, there is. I move to approve the Rule 11 Teacher Waiver Request for Educational Service Unit Number Three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Patsy, seconded by Lisa. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Andrea, please call the roll.
Tim? Cojones?
Yes.
Morrison? Goobles?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Nicky, Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Thank you, Andrea. Patsy, is there a motion on item 5.5B?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move to approve the Rule 11 Teacher Waiver Request for Santee Community Schools.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Patsy, seconded by Robin. Discussion on the motion? Patsy?
One of the things that we discussed in the meeting that I thought should be brought forward in this meeting, and I think my committee members will agree with me, is that one of the reasons that this is being brought forth for a waiver is because one of the teachers could not pass the praxis. And so, we've been discussing the praxis for a long time, and we keep going back and forth on it and saying we're going to do something, we're going to look at it, and I think now is the time. I've had several calls from schools in different parts of Nebraska where they're having trouble filling positions, and they're, you know, they're, they've already started school and they've got positions that are not full yet. And so, I think it's our responsibility to not just say that we're going to deal with this, but to perhaps deal with it. And last month, the Equity Committee, knowing full well that the, that Teaching and Learning Committee was very full, the Equity Committee volunteered to take on that job and to begin the process. And so, I just wanted to remind everyone of that and see if, that we could possibly make that possible for our constituents across the state who are trying to get kids in school and learning.
Lisa?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make sure that board members are aware that Brad Dirksen is working on this with a group of 20 people, and so it's been behind the scenes and Teaching and Learning has been working on this off and on the past couple of years.
Robin?
Yeah, it's great to hear everybody's going to be working on it. What does that look like? Does anyone, does anyone know, like what is our next step? Is it going to be the Equity Committee, or is it going to be the TSNL Committee, or has that decision been made yet? Because I agree with all the things that both Lisa and Patsy have indicated. You go to these area meetings, I don't know if it was mentioned at, at the ones that other people have been at, but I know it's, it's always an issue, also in ESUs bring it up. It is really time, so I really would like to know what the next steps are with that because it's an exciting thing to think we might be able to do some good with that.
I would just like to clarify, we do not have an Equity Committee. We discuss equity within teacher access and success. So it's easy to say Equity Committee, but we do not have a committee. Patsy, you had your hand up?
Will you let Deborah speak? She hasn't spoken.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Deborah?
Well, it's probably my fault because I keep calling it the Equity Committee, but I just wanted to clarify what you said. You said it was the Teaching and Learning Committee, but all of the-
Student Success and Access.
Thank you, I just wanted to make that clarification, yes, thank you.
Lisa?
I don't think, you're aware that the Teaching and Learning Committee has done some research over the years, and more recently, I've heard from two colleges with what they have been working with, with Brad Dirksen, and the potential of what will be considered along those lines. And so, maybe both committees could work on this at some point somehow. I know we have to have four and four, but there are different access, different parts of the praxis that access, success, and access can work on, and there are certain parts of it that the Teaching and Learning. So that both committees working on it might make this happen sooner rather than later.
Thank you, Lisa. Patsy?
Lisa, I think it would be great too if you brought to the full board all of the ideas that they have come up with so that, so that we can see where you are in the process. And you know that I would love to work with you, Lisa, on that, and I know my committee would as well.
Thank you, Patsy. Deborah?
Yeah, and just to clarify how this came up in our Equity Committee, as, as Patsy already mentioned, that it is something that because of the waiver that was requested by, was it Santee Schools, and, and because one of the teachers, you know, what was bringing, what was keeping them from being able to work in the school was the praxis. And we know that because of the shortage of teachers right now, and how important it is to get a lot more diversity of teachers in our schools, that's why we felt it was in part an equity issue in addition to a Teaching and Learning Committee. And so, whatever can move this forward the fastest and bring us success, that's what I support, so thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Anybody else? Seeing no further discussion, Andrea, please call the roll.
Goobles?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Morrison? Neary?
Yes.
Cojones?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Tim? Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Agenda item 5.5C, board members, is there any discussion on item 5.5C, Leading for Equity and Excellence Program LEAP? Patsy?
No.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item 5.6, Budget and Finance Committee. Patty, would you please provide a report from the Budget and Finance Committee meeting?
Yes, thank you. The Committee on Budget and Finance, Finance reports that the discussion and further detail, and we ask questions about each of the three consent agenda items, with NDE staff answering the Committee's questions by providing additional information. The Committee was in support of all three consent agenda items reviewed. There was no discussion related to the monthly travel expense report or the in-state travel authorization reports. And there was mention that the biennial request will come before the board next month. NDE will have a deficit budget request related to the costs for the move to the new location, as well as some operational obligations that are currently unfunded. There were no other items discussed, and that concludes the Budget and Finance Committee Report.
Thank you, Patty. Any questions for Patty? Seeing none. Agenda item 5.7, the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee did not meet, therefore there is no report from the Strategic Planning, Performance, and Improvement Committee meeting. Agenda item 6, Additional Business. Pursuant to Board Policy B9, I move to limit public comment to a maximum of three hours where each person may address the board for up to two minutes at the Friday, September 3, 2021 meeting. The board may take a 45-minute lunch break during such time announced at a time prior to recessing, with this break not included in the three-hour time limit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by President Nichols and seconded by Patsy. Is there any discussion on the motion? Deborah?
Yeah, I personally would be against putting a time limit on the public hearing tomorrow. I, I feel like there is a lot of opinions out there and a lot of anger, and I think we need to listen to all of it. I especially am interested, I know that there's some people that want to read all of my emails that they got through, FOIA requests, and I want to give them the opportunity to read each and every one. And I feel like we have a responsibility to listen, especially given some of the news articles this week that have been very confusing to many people. And I, I would like to make sure that we allow time for everyone to have a chance to
Robin?
First of all, for my colleague, you're suggesting not on the two minute per, you are suggesting for the total, total time. I'm just, from my own memory, going to review what we have done in the past, and I don't know if that gives us any direction or not. I know we have been consistent with the two-minute discussion, if I'm not mistaken, ever since the April meeting. I believe in the April and May, we limited it to, what, the first 75 or two hours, was it two hours? And then I think we went with what Deborah is mentioning here, unlimited at our last one. And the one that was at the Innovation Campus, I believe that we went unlimited time, total time, still the two-minute. So it is, just if there is some, some thought as to how we came up with, with 90, I'm not necessarily opposed to it or in favor of it, I'm just wanting to know if there's some, some rationale behind us being a little bit inconsistent, at least in that particular area.
I, I want to clarify that last month, it was not unlimited. We actually got done within the timeframe. We had until, I believe, oh, I don't remember the cutoff time, but when we came back from lunch, several had left. And because that number, because of the decrease in the number, we were done sooner than, I believe, the two-hour 45-minute time period that we had given. But we did limit it to two minutes each, as we had since April. Lisa?
I agree with the two minutes, that's the consistency that we've had, but with our proposed postponement of, of the potential to pause that, I would really want to hear from as many as possible, as long as they've signed up by a particular time. I just saw the result of trying to cut people off at one of our Carney meetings where they had driven, they let us know they had driven four or five hours, gotten off work, gotten, you know, childcare. And I just think that everybody that's going to take the time to sign up by nine o'clock and be here, I would like to hear what they have to say. If we ask for, you know, constituents, stakeholder input, I think we should listen to it.
Any other discussion?
I, I would just like to add, just, because I was just checking, so we're contracted to be here through five o'clock, where we need to be completely out, so that's the, the practical limitation on, on that for tomorrow, so.
Well, that would be, that would- Well, that would be, that would be appropriate. If we can't be in here, I would hate to transport all those people somewhere else, so.
And, and our staff will need time to tear down, so I'm just gonna, I, I have some practical limitations on that. I understand your discussion otherwise.
And you're going to need at least a good hour for teardown, correct? Okay.
I, I believe so.
Well, since some of the, I'm sorry. Deborah?
Thank you. My understanding is that the buses were going to leave at four o'clock anyway, so I wonder if we could take public comment up until 4:00 PM, which gives staff an hour to break down. Would that-
So, Deborah, would you, are you making an amendment?
I am making an amendment that-
Could you put that in writing for me?
Sure.
We'll pause for a few minutes for her to get that done. I will add that the amendment will be added into the, the motion, and it will take two-thirds vote of those present.
No, just a majority vote.
Just a majority vote on the amendment? Okay. Thank you. Deborah, I've got the amendment here. I want to make sure I have it correct. I move to amend the words in the motion by striking a maximum of three hours, and with this break not included in the three-hour time limit, and insert the words "to end by 4:00 PM" in the place of the three-hour limit. Is this your amendment?
Yes, thank you for wordsmithing that.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by, the amendment was made by Deborah, and seconded by Lisa. Is there discussion? Robin?
Out of respect for my good friend and colleague, Deborah Neary, I will vote for this amendment, and that is basically my only reason for doing it.
I, I missed that. Would you say that again?
Out of respect for my good friend and colleague, Deborah Neary, sorry, I will vote for this. However, I do want to make sure that people understand that we've received a lot of these emails attached to our emails from other people. Even in certain instances, we've had conversations, and so, I, and I think I've read every email that has been sent to me, and I guess if somebody wants to read them to me, and if my good friend and colleague says it's okay, and she wants it, I guess I'll, I'll listen to those again.
Any further conversation? Seeing none. The new motion reads- Call, okay. Andrea, please call the roll on the amendment.
Tim? Fricki?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Goobles?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Morrison? Cojones?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Back to the main motion now. Pursuant to Board Policy B9, I move to limit public comment to end by 4:00 PM, where each person may address the board for up to two minutes at the Friday, September 3, 2021 meeting. The board may take a 45-minute lunch break during such time announced at a time prior to recessing. Any discussion? Seeing none. Andrea, please call the roll.
Morrison? Goobles?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Tim? Cojones?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Fricki?
Yes.
Six yes, two absent.
Motion passes. Agenda item seven, Information Items and Reports, 7.1 through 7.5. These items are information items and written reports for the board and for our information only, so please make sure you check those out. Agenda item eight, Good of the Order. This section of the agenda is intended for board members to offer informal observations of the work of the State Board. Board members may make brief announcements about attendance at future events for the purpose of informing other board members. No business or motions or suggested actions of the board may be offered at this point in the agenda, nor should board members engage in substantive discussion about other agenda items or introduce new agenda items. Anyone have anything for the Good of the Order? Seeing none. Agenda item nine, Adjournment. Thank you for those who attended in person and who tuned in to the broadcast. The board will reconvene tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM in this room. The September 2, 2021 State Board Meeting is adjourned.